Lee doesn't realize you're bigger than that.
What is it? It's not the size of the dog in the fight, it's the size of the fight.
Same time, same place?
Yeah.
We'll call tonight's meeting to order. Mandy, would you take a roll call, please?
Andrew Grabon?
Present.
Raymond Ponto?
Present.
Kent Miller? Lee McMillan?
Present.
Tony Gignler?
Yes.
Matt Hotty?
Here.
Lloyd Latrell?
Present.
Thank you. Please stand with me for the invocation of the first. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening as we always ask for the advice and leadership that you give us in the direction for our community. We know all things go through you and you make all things possible. We thank you for blessing our young athletes as they represented our community this weekend throughout the state. They always make us proud and you make that possible. Be with us as we move forward, be with our law enforcement, be with our country with the election coming up next week. In your name we pray. Amen.
Let the regions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, it was nice that our cross-country teams, state championship for St. John's, their finish from Boyotes, like our community is just, our youth get to experience so much success. And I think that comes from the leadership of their parents, from our great community. And it's just always nice to be able to go somewhere and represent Boyote, Kansas, and talk about not only our community but our youth. And I think we're very fortunate. So just throw that out there. Lloyd, you have anything?
I only had one thing. I was going to ask, do we have an update on Highway 14 project and when that's going to get finished?
Yeah, actually, yep.
That mean rain on your parade?
No, yeah. Yeah, they, as I said last meeting, they had to do the file a graph on the road. We did get those results today. There are some high spots they're going to have to grind down. There's a little bit of just tension between KDOT and the contractor. So we're kind of caught in the middle unfortunately and they had a few working days left. And so they're still within that contract, working days. However, tomorrow, we have been working hard to try to speed up the road. It's virtually done. We're just trying to pass it. So tomorrow we're meeting on site with KDOT and the contractor and the engineers to kind of do a preliminary punch list. At least they can kind of get everything punched out while they wait to get the road ground down. So I don't have an answer for how soon they're going to do a lot more information Lloyd, and I can maybe shoot that out to everybody that they have a firmer date. You know, to me it was going to be this week or, or sorry, the very first part of next week was what I'd been told, but I hope I don't firm that up. But that's the story of what's going on. But encouraging developments today at least.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lloyd. Matt?
Thank you.
I had a resident approach me about the intersection of Mill and Second over here. And they made a comment, they've been about been in two wrecks there at that intersection, that because there's cars parked on each side of that intersection, it's tough to see around and catch the traffic going north and south. And just, they didn't know if there's anything we can do there. I mean, it's kind of the nature of how it's set up. But he said, he said this time he got right out there and just about got broadsided. So wanted me to bring it up, so.
Okay. Thank you. Bush?
Yes. Last night we had trucker, no, trunk or treat. I didn't remember what we called it. At Zion Lutheran Church, at Luther Park, I would say probably about 200 people were there. Children went through. A lot of adults opened their trunks up and passed out candy. And I would like to give a big thanks to Chief and your people for being there. They brought their little golf cart, if you would, and passed out bags of candy and goodies to the kids. And I thought it was a darn nice show for the city of Boyotes to do that. Thank you, Chief.
No problem. Thanks.
Anything else? Thank you. Tony?
Yeah, the planter, the Dairy Queen approached me. Apparently a customer had come in and chose to have a scare with a kid trying to cross the highway out there to get either the Dairy Queen or the Sonic or whatever. Wondering is there anything for a crosswalk, what light that we can deal with that? I mean, for, I mean, it is 45. And I mean, if you just put a crosswalk out there and no way of actually slowing down traffic here, it's not going to be a whole heck of a long road.
That's some way to have to work with KDOT.
And that's a K-8 thing, I'm sure.
You know, so it's something we can look into, you know, and see.
Of course.
You know, there's a few areas, it seems like when we go around that outside, that maybe things need to be slowed down up there on Eighth Street where that enters on. You know, sometimes that just seems like that's a begging for a stoplight there to slow everything down. We've had fatalities there. And there, up there to slow that traffic.
The case had cornered Eighth Street. I mean, it's just so wonderful.
Yeah.
The hazards that we get to deal with, I guess.
And then you know with our Casey's out there, that's kind of become a traffic hazard there, you know, unintentional. But with, you know, people trying to get on from there and get off of 24 into that business, it's making it kind of an unsafe spot. People aren't paying attention. But it's probably something we can ask about and it's.
Matt, are you incorporating, you know, into a future if you ever had trails, you know, because of Wallace Center's across there, you know, there's a couple of things across there. How do you get safely across that 14?
That would have been my question.
We've got a trail that goes up.
At what point do we put a crossing?
Yeah.
How many do you put towards the Jack or on Wall Street or?
Yeah, yeah, tee it off anywhere because then you could almost have like a trail frontage up along there too. You know, goodness is.
We're half a block away from that roadside park with the existing trail. There wouldn't be too much to connect to.
Sure, to get it across.
Riverside Park.
I'll make a note and I'll just at least plant the bug in stores here. I don't know the process with KDOT doesn't do that stuff.
Yeah, it'll be a long.
Yeah.
It'll be a long, I'll be retired. Process. Kind of like the railroad and then across. He'll let him someday. But anyway, that's not our fault either. Anyway, Andrew?
Not that.
Katie, do you have anything at this point?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason?
Yeah, hopefully you see a little picture there. That was from the Halloween thing that was passing around. People took some pictures of it. That was on Facebook. And that was a, it's a pretty cool, non-taxpayer funded vehicle that can be used. It's a good showcase for the police department. Otherwise, yeah, the K-14 is going on. The, we did meet on the HEAL council, so there'll be more coming on that here down the line. Thank you. The Merrell Farmleigh should be coming back here, you guys, in the next council meeting. Now with Heather to talk about the North Campus, so that should be more coming. We all have in process. That's why hopefully this meeting is a little shorter tonight. I did talk to John Brummer today and the, some of you got to see the water plant. The clarifier is giving them the consistent product now, so they're happy with that. Filter, the filtration kind of in the middle, that big middle piece, the super filter, however you call it, is doing what it needs to do now. So they're going to start working on the RO or reverse osmosis, now kind of getting that up to speed and spitting out the right kind of products, see if it's working on the bromides and all that kind of stuff. So really, he said no surprises so far beyond just normal, normal little things. All positive on that. And I went to KNEA, my first KNEA board meeting last week, so that was interesting. And then going to their little conferences this, in latter part of this weekend. Otherwise, LMC thing at the Kettle was well attended. There was probably 60 plus people there. So that was good to see. Otherwise, that's about it right now unless there's other questions. I do have a report under par, I just don't have it in the backpack at this time. Hopefully you'll see that going forward. At least you'll have a little more condensed version to kind of see how we're doing and how they're aging, how we're getting them completed for him. But I'll be there next time.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda this evening is the consent agenda from October the 18th and appropriations 11A. So moved, then moved by Councilman Grabon that we approve the consent agenda and appropriations 11A. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ponto. Any further discussion? Mandy, would you take a roll call vote, please?
McMillan?
Yes.
Gignler?
Yes.
Hotty?
Yes.
Grabon?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
Ponto?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item on the evening, on the agenda this evening is ordinance 2194, the solid waste.
This is just what you had last time. I just made some clarifications to section 17504.
I guess my only question there was, is if you're getting your trash picked up on a Tuesday, is it going to continue to be a Tuesday? Or is that something that's going to change when we get a new?
Yeah, so I did talk with Jamie. He gets feedback from the ordinance that he has requested. His plan is to do exactly the same schedule since he doesn't want to change it on people again. He said that Wednesday is going to be a little tight for him, but he's going to, he thinks he can do it. So he just said probably the first, you know, couple of weeks that they might miss a few, but he's going to work really hard to make sure people know his number. We're going to do some things so people can know what his number is to contact him because he said he'd be right there to pick it up if it was missed. So yeah, so to answer your question, Andrew, it shouldn't be the same.
I don't know if I want to hand her in or anything, but I mean, what if Topeka slash the county raises the landfill fees on him? I mean, he's trying to better just as close to where he's not profiting from landfill fees as you can possibly do this job, but you're about done.
Yeah, so.
I mean, what if they double it on him? And then, then what do we do?
Yeah, so that'll be addressed in the contract. So that's, we're working on that part now. And in the contract, it'll be kind of like Mitchell County's contract where they had concessions for, you know, the landfill fee. You can do a request or an appropriate raising to compensate for that. So there'll be some of that. Katie's working on it now. So hopefully the next meeting will have that piece now that we've got the ordinance pretty well squared away. So yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Will we see this again then when the contract?
The ordinance itself?
No, not the ordinance, but.
The contract?
The issue again.
Oh.
I mean, after the contracts, will we see the issue?
Will we see the contract and have to vote on that too, once it's complete?
Yes. Yep, you'll have a resolution approving the contract.
Yeah, this is just a waste, all waste ordinance. And basically just, you know, figured since we're kind of changing things a little bit, we should probably address that and make sure it was accurate and what we wanted. And obviously, it deals with more than just the residential pickup, you know. So yeah, that's why it seems like you're seeing a lot.
Yeah, we felt like.
We really didn't have a contract before.
I feel like we should talk about trash at every meeting, you know.
Yeah.
Well, we got a lot of trash, trash under from Bush.
It's piling, it's piling up, so I'm sorry.
I resemble that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve ordinance 2194.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved by Councilman Hotty that we approve ordinance 2194, solid waste. And it was seconded by Councilman Latrell. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Mandy, would you please take a roll call vote?
Gignler?
Yes.
Grabon?
Yes.
Ponto?
Yes.
Latrell?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Hotty?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda this evening is ordinance 2195 for the compensation of the city attorney. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor, I approve, approve ordinance 2195.
Motion made by Councilman Hotty that we approve ordinance 2195. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Grabon. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Mandy, would you take another roll call vote, please?
Latrell?
Yes.
Ponto?
Yes.
Gignler?
Yes.
Grabon?
Yes.
Hotty?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance passed. Next item on the agenda this evening is the KNEA Board of Directors appointment. And it's recommended that we appoint Administrator Reedy as Director One, Voting Delegate and Electric Operations. Ronnie Spoor leader as Director Number Two. Foreman Manny Millvers is alternate voting delegate and the KNEA Board of Directors. Do you have a motion to this? So moved by Councilman McMillan that we approve the aforementioned to be on the Board of Directors of the KNEA. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gignler. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Sorry, I'm my sheet. Old habits die hard. I put mayor here instead of the city administrator. So we all caught that.
Is he also Board Director of City?
Yeah, that part I don't know.
Just ignore that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Next item on the agenda is the KNEA self-capacity to MEED. Any questions for staff on this?
I can have a question.
Yes, okay.
This is a sale of capacity, not a sale of energy?
It would be whatever it was before. So the actual vernacular, that part I do not know.
GRD. Pardon me?
It's on the negative GRD.
It's a piece of the GRDA contract as well.
Well, there's difference between capacity and, I mean, because on the, from the agenda, it's called a capacity sale. And in the agenda notes, it's called an energy contract.
Isn't it capacity, Ronnie?
It's one meg of GRD energy. Actually, it's energy.
Oh.
It says two.
No, it's two for June through August and one for all the other months. Yeah, so it's basically, that part I don't know Lloyd, so I'm sorry. But it's basically what we're doing currently. We're doing it for one year at this point with the city of MEED has negotiated.
And regardless of this contract, we still will approve the capacity. We're just selling it to.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. It's almost like we're subleasing into them. Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess my question is, we used to sell it at 35. MEED wants to sell it at 30. And then you say, I would prefer a higher price for a period of only one year after discussion. So I guess, what price are we actually?
We get that for 3250?
Yeah.
Where are we going here?
So this is kind of all just the last week and a half here. And so I did talk to Dean Cordes over at MEED Monday morning. And they were, yeah, wanting the 30 for two years. I been talking to Scott, just thinking about myself. I wasn't real excited about going for a two-year period, just with the unknowns of what the energy markets are going to do. And right now, it's like we showed last, last time, it's a good, it's worked out well for us. So yeah, here's one, pass it on. Unless here's kind of listening to kind of get you more familiar, I just kind of made that up. But, or put that together. So I did talk with him and, and he was fine to go to one. And KNEA is, there are people, obviously, they kind of work for both sides of us. So they're the ones that kind of threw out the $30 number based on the market, what other opportunities there were. And so the, so I talked with him. He was interested in doing one year at 30. So what I did is the sheet you kind of passed around here, this is kind of looking at that, kind of like I showed you last time, how the PCA has helped, has kind of knocked down since we've been able to plug in the market here the last nine, 10 months. This is what it would do at 30 or 32. Okay, so we're still going to come out ahead based on what the market's doing. But also, you know, with only one or two, maybe lots of capacity, being solar energy, whatever, it doesn't leave us really exposed. We still have enough resources that we can, we can, we can make it. But, you know, for one year is all I really wanted to expose us to. And I kind of put 30 or 32 because in case you guys said, no, we asked, we had to have 32, I had to go back to them. But I kind of want to gauge what you guys are feeling because I have to, their council meeting is November 14th. Obviously, the contract was ending December 31st. So we kind of want to get it squared away. And it has been a good, a good thing for us so far. So yeah, so I would entertain any questions. I can explain further about the KNEA things. I understand where we're at, about 75% of our power is coming from this GRDA contract, which is like I talked to you last time. It's like the bond part of your portfolio is really safe, but it's also, it's expensive. At the EMP2 meeting that I was at, probably the 13 communities, we were, there's only like one other, I think it was over 50%. So this helps us kind of get down to that. So we kind of a little bit more diverse and hopefully able to deliver a little bit cheaper product to our customers. Lloyd?
What is a total capacity that we have right now?
Do we have contracted?
Well, even including our own. What is power?
Sure. Well, I mean, through, through KNEA, is that 7.39?
I mean, our load has gone up to 13.
Yeah, and.
Mega watts. And I wonder what our total capacity is.
Your generation is said that 20, but what I understand, they don't like so much over 18 because of the units are very old.
Yeah. But we have other contracts too. I want, you know, the total capacity is?
That's, that's what that one is right there. So the second piece right here, Lloyd, of all of our contracts is the 7.349 is what we have contracted. So then beyond that, we'd have to go in the spot market, you know, to.
So the 7.349 plus the.
What the plan allows, I mean, you know Lloyd, but what the plan allows us to do is be able to play in the market. We have to have that capacity, even if they run it for whatever the minimum is to show that they can run. It allows us to then go play in that spot market, which we can do with that PCA. So that's what, kind of offloading some of that, this, to me, at loss. We can turn around and still make it up in the market itself. So that's kind of what we've been doing for the last nine, 10 months so far. So this is, this is, we can, it's a five, this GRDA portion that we're offloading one to two, depending based on the time of year, we have to take at least 75% of that no matter what. So there's not a lot of, you know, it's not, you just can't take and go play in the market. We got to pay for 75% of that five. Get my words, make some mega watts no matter what. So.
So between us and MEED, it's kind of a win-win?
Yeah, exactly. They kind of get a little bit bigger piece of GRDA, then they fix bandwidth power and we get to, you get a little bit more diverse and take advantage of it in the market at this point.
So the $44,000 difference between 35 and 30, they're saying that actually is legitimate based on market conditions?
Yeah, so this is his spreadsheet, what he actually did. He went and plugged in 32 and 30, what that would do for us over that run. And we're still positive, you know, six figures.
But based on the market, the 30 is a, is a good number. So 35, based on today's market, would not be something you could achieve most likely?
Well, you mean as far as selling for, yeah, the market is the market. And basically, the problem is the KNEA organization, that, that person that's kind of targeting Pelican with us, he's kind of, you know, trying to put the leverage or put a little pressure on us even, you know, kind of, I think, trying to show that he's doing a good job for MEED too. And so he kind of spit that in his emails, me, I think, right here, that, you know, he kind of put out there that an outside offer might be $20 a megawatt hour, 25 a megawatt hour for two years or five years. So he kind of threw that out there at the end, acting like, you know, this is something that they might be able to get somewhere else even cheaper. So.
What are we giving for?
What are we paying for this GRDA?
Yes, 30 megawatt.
Oh man, I know it. But it's going to be real approximate, like 45-ish is what I think is what it's running us.
So we're losing 15.
Yeah.
Is that?
But we can buy it on the market for like 15 or something like that to replace it. So Scott has numbers and they work. I couldn't tell you that without, yet. Give me another month or two at all.
Any more questions for Jason? More questions, entertain a motion to approve the KNEA self-capac, uh, power, self-capacity to MEED. So moved by Councilman Hotty that we approve the self-capacity to MEED. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman McMillan. Any further discussion?
So are we approving two years or one year?
One year.
Yeah, one year.
Yeah. As far as the dollar amount, as much as I can, basically.
20, 20.
Are you going to shoot for 32?
32 is what I'm going to say. I'm going to say that's what I got pressure to ask for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would like to shoot for one year.
Yeah. The one year is like the most important.
That was the vote.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Next item on the agenda this evening is the generator bid from Cummins Central Power in the amount of $17,535. Any questions for staff?
How many more generators are we looking for?
Uh, I've talked to Adam Moser, the foreman, and we're thinking there's three critical throughout the system. We have 10 lift stations right now, but there's three is critical with this one being the most critical because it's a smaller and it's bound to, during a power outage, it'd be bound to back up the quickest.
Okay. And it looks like you're wanting to make this stationary, I guess, but.
Yes.
Outside, not, not portable.
It, it will be a stationary unit. We'll still maintain our portable unit to service the other lift stations.
Around the different areas.
And, but we're, we're getting enough lift stations now to where if we have, due to extreme weather event, if we have power outage, we're not going to be able to get to them all. And we're going to definitely run into a problem of backup to residents.
So there's three other stations that are critical. Did we even entertain the possibility of seeing what they'd shoot us a price to buy two or more?
No, I chose to go with just the one at now to see if we're getting everything that we need out of it before we bid out other ones. That I'm straight on what we wanted, that we have everything that we need for it to work for that size lift station and everything. Or if, oh, okay, well, we should have gone with this other additional piece of equipment or something like that. This is a kind of our, I believe I got everything on it, but it's kind of our trial phase generator.
When this happens, how long does it take you to mobilize? And how much time do you have before you start having issues?
Uh, depends on the lift station. With number one, it's a matter of maybe half hour. And as I mentioned, it's one of the smaller lift stations with less holding capacity. And then by the time we hit all the different lift stations around town, it just, we're going to run into, we haven't run into it yet. So don't misunderstand me there, but eventually we're going to run into a problem of if we can't get to them in time, then there are going to be issues and basically we're going to head off those issues.
Sounds like it's a good idea. So basically, if this works out the way you're hoping it is, we'll probably see residents, you know, coming back for more?
Yeah, yeah. Probably, probably not until next year.
Okay.
But now the other ones will be sized a little bit larger due to lift station capacities.
Okay. So moved, then moved by Councilman Grabon that we approve the lift station generator bid in the amount of $17,535. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ponto. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Put your name. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is the transformer bid from Chris Davis in the amount of $46,347. Any questions for staff? If there's no questions, I'd take the motion to approve the transformer bid. So moved by Councilman McMillan that we approve the transformer bid for the amount of $46,347. Do you have a second? Second by Councilman Latrell. Any further discussion?
Actually, I do. One quick question. It talks about easing outages on Circuit 13 during climate weather. Where does Circuit 13 encompass? Like, what's that area?
Okay, where David Culres, you go across the river, CPS, you have sewer plant and it goes all the way out to Kirk, Farwell's, and back to Systems Operations Shop along the highway.
It's.
On the highway. And it takes a sign slope, circle drive.
So this is the circuit that we, the outages we were seeing this past. So this is the circuit that we, the outages we were seeing this past, was all this circuit, basically?
Right, basically, that's where most of them are at. Most of the problems were up around the cemetery and the old landfill, but we're such a big circuit, you take a light and you hit there, it just puts it all out. So if we get another circuit out there and it works like it should, if you get hit the same way like that, it'll kick still Circuit 13 off, but most of the other circuits, we